Okay. Let's get started then, since we're a tiny bit behind. And we'll start with roll call.
Newton?
Here.
Newton, Swift?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Kirline? Ackerman? Gonzalez? Parber?
Here.
And Sheriff Fragoso?
Here. Thank you. And then the next item is approval of the agenda. And I understand we have a motion to make a change. Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, thanks. I'll move to -- well, first off, is anyone here from the public for the accessory dwelling unit ordinance? Okay, seeing nobody, I will move to move item one, the draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance and the bringing those all into compliance with the state regs to right before the meeting minutes and then approve the agenda as modified.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? We will move that item. And then we can proceed with public comments on non-agenda items. If you are here to talk about something that is not listed on the agenda, please step forward, give us your name and address if you would, and make your comment. Can we start here in a public hearing? So Ms. Lindas ready to go?
Yes. This is where the ordinance is not covered.
Okay. All right. The first public hearing item on our agenda then is 145 Forest Avenue, application 1735. And Michelle, you have our staff report?
Do we speak up?
We can't.
It lights up, but it's not sounding.
So do I turn it down?
No. You can't turn it down. Just stand back off.
Okay. The project site is located at 145 Forest Avenue. The site is 17,346 square feet in area and slopes up from Forest Avenue at a rate of 38 percent. The site's developed with a one-story, 1,671-square-foot residence. And I wanted to provide some background because this project was continued from the planning commissions meeting of September 15, 2016. And initially, the applicant proposed improvements to the single-family residence as well as to a retaining wall. And in a back-and-forth with staff, wanted to remove the repair of the retaining wall from the application, hoping to get approval at a later date. When staff went to the site and did some investigation into the retaining wall, we found that it was not permitted and it was being supported by some mature redwood trees. So we brought the project before the planning commission with the retaining wall element to be permitted at a later date. And you requested that we continue the item and that the retaining wall be part of the project for the improvements to the residence. So here we are today with that project in its entirety. And it has been reviewed by the town engineer and the applicant's engineer, and everybody is happy with the design proposed at this time. So I'll go through just the improvements to the residence. They're proposing to add a total of 112 square feet of additional square footage. This would be adding a master closet onto a bedroom, extending a living dining room area, and covering an existing concrete patio with some wooden decking. The project complies with the setback requirements, the floor area ratio, and the lot coverage requirements for the site. As I said before, the retaining wall that was constructed without permits will be removed. The vehicle turnout area that was on top of this retaining wall will also be removed and pulled back. And the solution that is proposed was found to have the least amount of impact to the redwood trees. And with that, I -- staff recommends that you conduct a public hearing and move to approve application number 16-35 by adopting resolution number 16-28, setting forth the findings and conditions for project approval. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any questions of staff? Before we open up the public hearing? Okay, then, is there anyone here in the public who would like to address the commission on this item? Please step forward, give us your name, your comments. Our former commissioner, good to see you again.
My name is Sue Peterson, 139 Forest. I don't have a problem with the new plans. They're great, the new plans. I'm glad that the wall is mean fixed first. I think that was important. My only other concern, and I stated it in September, but I'd like to reiterate it, is my parking area that is immediately up against 145's driveway. If there's not a car there, the tendency is for 145 to drive across my parking. He can get out of his driveway without touching my property, but when there's not a car there, it's just easier. And I'm concerned about construction damage to that parking area. It's the only parking area I have on the property. I mean, my neighbor's lucky he has a big old driveway with parking up there, but I don't. I'm concerned with being able to come home and park there when I need to. I'm concerned about damage both to the asphalt pad and to the retaining wall. I have no way, without being there 24 hours, to assure that it's not being used as construction So I would, like I said for the record, like to put my concern out there. I don't know how to make sure that doesn't happen, but I want it known my concern in case it does.
Your property is directly to the left?
Yes.
As you face 145?
If you're facing west on my property, you're looking straight up his driveway. One of the pictures that the arborist took is taken--
Is this your space that this car is in? Would you mind stepping forward and telling me if this is the area you're talking about?
Yes, the asphalt. You can see the line there?
Yeah.
Between his driveway's cement, his concrete. My parking's asphalt. And you can see the line. That's the property line.
We're not getting on the road.
Oh.
Okay.
I'll go back down.
Okay. And I'll repeat this also to the commissioners. On the photograph that we have, if we look at the bottom-left photo, there is a car parked there. Is that your car, Sue?
It is.
Okay. And one can see a very clean demarcation between the concrete driveway and the asphalt parking pad. Is that on the right-of-way or is that your property?
Well, that's the -- that marks the property line between our two properties.
Yeah.
How far the right-of-way goes into my parking, honestly, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Not all of it, but--
Some of it.
But his driveway does too.
The whole -- that whole bottom end of the driveway?
I'm sure -- I'm sure both parts probably do encroach on the right-of-way.
Could staff clarify that?
Yeah. So what I can say is that the wall that was built for -- what's your address there?
139.
139 was built to create a parking space for 139 Forest. So it may encroach a couple -- you know, the parking space may be a couple feet into the right-of-way or more, but it doesn't really matter because the wall was built to provide the one parking space for the house. So it is the parking space for 139.
Yes.
Yes. It's not like one of those downslope pullouts where people just pull out and you don't have a right to claim it for your house. This was a wall they excavated, they built the wall for that house. It's parking for that house.
And it looks like you can get two small cars in there.
Oh, you can. You can actually get a big car and a small car. We had a extra-long Ford Aerostar van and a small sedan that we parked on that property together, side by side.
And it looks like the driveway to 145 has sufficient space.
To maneuver up and down the driveway.
The width of that is sufficient for their drive.
Right now, there are trashcans in part of my parking because as I've gotten older, it's very hard for me to haul them up and down the hill.
I understand.
Which is why the parking is even more important.
So your concern is not so much that they're infringing somehow on your parking space, but that during construction, they could infringe on it and perhaps damage the asphalt that you put in there and the--
Yes. On the day-to-day, I have not -- when you first bought the house, we've gone through this with every new neighbor, it's kind of like, that's where we park, please don't park there. But he was receptive to that, and we've not had a problem since. So yes, it's the construction-related issues that I'm concerned about, that they're either going to use it as a staging area and/or have big, heavy cement trucks and stuff drive them back and forth on it. And the roadway, Fairfax's roadway, is protected by the ordinance that's going to be passed, but my property is not.
Okay, so we can ask that question to the applicant when--
Okay.
--when he speaks, and then we've made a note of that for now.
Can I just ask, would you be opposed to any kind of, like, temporary delineation? I'm thinking of some of those, you know, rubber stands with a string of orange tape or something that marked it out during the construction process?
No, I wouldn't. That would not bother me at all. It would -- if it's going to bother anybody, it'll bother him, not me. But like I said, those can also be moved. And I'm just concerned that when it's convenient, that that area will get used in a way that it's not ever been used before. And nor was it built to be used that way.
Heavy vehicles. Staff also had a suggestion that the building official, and he's done this on other projects that have similar situations, meets out there with the owner and takes photographs before the construction starts. So if you put up the temporary delineation, right, so that they know where their driveway is and where the parking is, and then we have documentation of what it looked like by the building official, there's really no reason for any member of the public driving on Forest to veer into this area. I mean, I guess maybe once in a while, if two cars are passing, they might use it, but--
Yeah, that would be the only time.
I think that would help because we'd be able to, you know, if all of a sudden a huge slab is cracked, right?
Absolutely. I was just about to suggest that also.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That we take some photographs and then we make an assessment afterward. But still, it's a discussion we can have with the owner.
I have a question. Doesn't the contractor have to provide a construction management plan for staging and workers' parking?
You know, the construction management plan usually addresses what roads they're going to access, but I think you can include language that they will include in their construction manual, how they plan to avoid using that parking. And that can only help because it'll be on file with the building official.
Right.
You'll have the markers up, you'll have the photographs.
If I recall correctly, one of the reasons we were requesting or requiring that the retaining wall be fixed was because of the traffic -- or the trucks, delivery trucks going up the hill and that, you know, the weight, the loads could actually compromise it further. So I think the plan is for trucks to deliver up, but if maybe some language can be added to the construction management plan about that and the photos, I think that would cover you.
Yeah, that's -- sounds good.
And then beyond construction, then a note in the project file, Linda, about the limitations of 145 using that as a parking space, since it was dedicated specifically for the other property.
Okay, I'm sorry. So you want us to put something in the file?
Aside from construction management, that moving forward, when construction is completed, that 145 could not consider that to be their exclusive parking space because it's for another -- for the adjacent neighbor, right?
Okay, yeah, you can--
Some kind of note in the file.
But you wouldn't have that in the permit file or anything?
Well, it's kind of an unusual situation because the driveway kind of runs -- I think we could -- I think if you chose to do something about that, we could create a deed restriction that just has a drawing of the situation that gets recorded, so when he goes to sell, new owners know that that's not theirs.
I think something would be helpful because who knows in the future who might own it? And Ms. Peterson's property was required to install that. Is that my understanding? They were required to--
I don't think they were required to. I think the house predates the parking area, so the house was one of these little cottages that people probably walked to or took horses to. And they built the improvement when vehicles became more prevalent and they needed a place for their cars. So it was built--
But didn't you say it is for their exclusive use?
Yes.
That's the point.
It's not a part of--
It's for their exclusive use.
Yes.
It's not just a random parking spot down the street.
First-come, first-served, right.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment on this project? Is the owner or the owner's representative here? Could you?
I'm Eric Micketon. I am the architect for the project. And the owner is actually on a flight out of the country right now, on a vacation, so he couldn't be here to address you, but I do have a letter that he asked me to read into the record. So -- and then I'll just say a brief statement after this. So he says, "I regret that I am not able to attend this meeting, but I'm out of the country on a trip that was scheduled in early December. You may recall, at the previous meeting, planning staff recommended that approval be continued due to issues with the retaining wall and turnout. At that time, I said I would do whatever the town wanted. It is taking some time to understand what the town engineer wanted because I believe we were doing, we are doing -- or sorry, however, I believe we are doing exactly what he and planning staff indicated would be acceptable. In addition, you were kind enough to review the house plans the last time that we appeared here. And at that time, you said that there were no issues with the house, just with the retaining wall. One neighbor at 139 Forest had concerns about damage to her parking spot and a redwood tree falling on her house. I called her and offered to protect the parking by not letting anyone drive on it, by restricting access via a traffic cone and tape. She said this would meet her concerns. Next, my arborist reported on the height of the trees, and all of the trees are too short to hit her house if they did fall. Planning staff also asked me to address all of the neighbors' houses. The only one close enough is the house on the other side of my house at 153 Forest. We are addressing this by having a certified arborist supervise the work near to the trees. I want to point out that no trees will be touched by the construction or the demolition of the turnout, so we do not anticipate any trees or tree limbs being impacted by the work. I'm requesting a decision from the planning commission this evening. We have had submitted -- we had submitted a plan, had it rejected, and with incomplete explanations requiring a new plan. This has now happened three times, and each cycle has required costly consultation with a structural engineer, geotechnical engineer, arborist, and architect, in addition to the town consultants. In addition, each cycle has taken months, and as a result, I've lost my contractor and will lose another one if we can't move ahead. I hope you will approve the project, and we can resolve any remaining staff concerns separately. It is likely I will abandon the project or possibly do those portions that do not require planning approval if we do not get approval this evening, such as seismic repairs, attic insulation, bathroom furniture, and fixture upgrades.
Excuse me, sir. Could you just backtrack with that sentence that you're reading? I missed the first part.
Sure. It is likely -- and he's saying, "If we were to not get an approval this evening, it is likely I would abandon the project or possibly do only those portions that do not require planning approval, such as seismic repairs, attic insulation, bathroom furniture, and fixture upgrades. The existing turnout and retaining wall in that case would remain, and if they fail, I would stop using the turnout." So that was his statement written last week. So we -- now, this is me speaking. And very often with projects that have a neighbor sort of parking issue, what we do is kind of what he described, as well as putting up signs that say, "No construction parking," because if you just say, "No parking," people think, oh, that's just kind of a general thing. But if it's no construction, then all the contractors and their subcontractors know it's addressing them. So we would do that, tape it off, and make sure that everybody's comfortable with it. Luckily, it is clear what the edge of the property is because the concrete edge that transitions to asphalt is, in fact, the property line. About a third of that parking area is actually in the public way for both properties. And you can see that on the land survey. That's part of the package on the second page. And that drawing shows the full extent of the parking area that goes into the neighboring So I guess the only other thing that I would add is that, you know, we met with staff out at the site and the town engineer and our structural engineer and our arborist and our geotechnical engineer and sort of paced out what the solution would be to the parking area, to find something that was satisfactory to everybody, that was doable in terms of being constructible and, you know, reasonable cost. And I think we have a very good solution at this point that everybody's happy with. And the owner is looking forward to moving ahead with the entire project as soon as possible. We've also already submitted the building permit in December, so that's sort of sitting and awaiting planning approval. So we're hoping that with a positive vote tonight, that we'll be able to let the building department know and be under construction soon.
Sir, can you tell me what the phasing of the work is? Who's on first? What comes second? Does the driveway get done as opposed to the interior?
The driveway and house leveling that are part of the work would probably commence -- well, actually, I'm not sure. I don't know if Ken, the contractor, is here. No. He was going to speak to the phasing, but basically, he wanted to, I believe, get everything going right away and not sort of phase it because that would slow things down and have the freedom to do it all, you know, as it makes sense in terms of constructibility.
But my understanding was that the retaining wall was going to be constructed first or repaired?
I don't know if that would necessarily be constructed first. I mean, there's full access to the house, even if that whole area was not, you know, was not there, even if they cut that extension, which is the turnout that we're calling. If they were to cut that off, which it is being removed, the driveway is still serviceable and you can still get up to the house, so--
I believe our concern, the last time we looked at it, and I'm not sure if -- Mimi, I think you were here. Our concern was the condition of that driveway that seemed to be failing, cracked and broken and failing and basically being held up by the redwood trees, it seems. And so -- and at that time, weren't they proposing to do everything at the house and at some later date come back and maybe do that driveway, which is what we found unacceptable, as I recall?
To do that -- to do the driveway later? Unacceptable?
Yes, that's why it's taken you so long to get back here with the geology reports that were needed and the arborist and engineering analysis to figure out how you were going to build that driveway.
Actually, what we wanted to do initially was to have it be a separate permit, in fact. So now it's combined in the same permit, so it's--
There's separate permits.
Pardon me?
They are separate types of permits, but they have to all come in at the same time.
Right. And what we submitted to the building department does have the retaining wall on it, so we did not separate it.
Yes, that's right.
Right.
And that's why it took so long, because it had to be a complete package. I see your contractor's here. If you'd like to have him say anything?
Oh, Ken? Let me ask a quick question of staff. There's no, from the town engineer's perspective, there's no guidance or limitation on how they approach the project as far as working on the retaining wall in the house together or--
It's within your purview. You do it a lot of times for new houses or houses where you have the authority to make it a condition that the work on the driveway be completed before the construction or coinciding with, you know, so if they pour a foundation for the house, they make sure that it's happening at the same time, you know, and they don't get beyond a certain point until the driveway is fixed. So you could condition it upon the driveway being a portion of the first part of the construction and that, like framing on the additions, no framing inspections will be done until the driveway is finished.
But I guess my question was, from the town engineer's perspective, did he see any safety or any kind of need to address it?
We didn't ask him that question. Yeah.
Doesn't see--
He did say in the field, though, that when you get up to the top, the soil underneath the portion of the driveway is not stable. And so that's why they're going to be putting supports underneath a portion of the existing driveway. So he did indicate that the driveway isn't stable as it stands, so, yeah.
So it sounds like the work would be concurrent.
That's the way it should happen. If you're concerned about it, you should make it a condition. Yeah.
And I would say that certainly we wouldn't want to have to have, you know, two concrete pores and, you know, I mean, that would, for such a small project, be sort of disproportionate additional cost and drag it out even further. And if Ken would like to come up, maybe he can just speak to the staging in a little bit more detail.
So, good evening. My name is--
Hassan. Okay, perfect. Do you mind if I hum a little bit first? Okay, sir. So Ken Mayer-- So Ken Mayer, I don't know if I'm necessarily standing up here to represent this project, even though I am one of the bidders, and looks like I may be doing the work for the kill. I think that it kind of started a little bit more about the, my interest kind of peaked a little bit when they started talking about the scope of work and associated with the redwood trees. And so I think my, I have two things that I want to say. I think that number one, yes, one could easily say that when you drive up on that driveway, the driveway is in rough shape. And you can see that there is some failing on the wood retaining wall, and you can see gaps underneath the concrete, and there's probably cracking associated with the redwood trees. Redwood trees have a very expansive root system, and there's a good chance that there, there's a water, a lot of water that flows down that hillside, and they're probably trying to grab as much, because redwood trees are, I mean, that's basically, they're water thieves. They'll just, I mean, you can walk down the street, and there's redwood trees, they're like huge umbrellas. They just grab everything that they can grab, and they love it, and kudos to them for that. But I find it really hard to believe that the redwood trees there, and especially the two that are in focus here, or the two that are on the side of this little turnout there, are in stress. Because if you drive up there and you look down, those redwood trees are flourishing. There are so many little babies, and they're sprouting, and they're everywhere. And so if the decision is being made because the redwood trees are at all stressed, and you're making decisions based on that, I find that that's actually, I, I kind of have a hard time with that, and a hard time to even swallow that. If you're asking him to change things because of whatever reason, then that's, and I'm kind of jumping in in the middle, and I don't have all the background information on this, but if it's about the, the condition of the trees, anybody who says that those trees are stressed, and they're dying, or they're in bad shape, then I would say that that's, that's a lie, because there's no indication that that is true, nothing that I can see. And I'm not an expert, but I have a lot of experience. And then number two, regarding the conversation that just happened, and if you are making some kind of condition upon him, I would ask you guys to give the applicant, his architect, and myself as much leeway to be able to stage the job and do the job on whatever is appropriate. I don't want to have to do that driveway and then have to protect it the entire time. It's kind of like, if I'm going to come in here and paint this floor, I want to kind of paint my way right out. I don't want to turn around and paint all the way around, wait for it to dry, and then have to step over the paint every single day. And so, yes, there is economy of scale, there's, he's indicating about trucks, and the amount of concrete and stuff like that, but that driveway, if you look at the engineering, and if you do all that, that's, that's a pretty big undertaking, and that should almost be a standalone project. And I do know that there is some concerns, had a little conversation with Linda, about making sure that everybody, if they say they're going to do something, that they're held accountable. And I had a conversation with him, and he, he indicated to me that he's a little bit concerned about how much money that he spends on this project, to make sure that he does have enough money to be able to do the driveway as you're requesting him to do it. And I mean, you can make conditions upon him, and I think there's lots of different ways to kind of hold them accountable, but I would hope that you do not make conditions upon him that make it hard for everybody else to do the work. So that's pretty much my story. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, though. I think our concern is that the engineer has noted that the driveway is not in great shape. I don't believe we're saying the trees are dying, but the driveway's condition is one that is crashing into them right off the edge of that driveway, and with big construction trucks moving up there?
I'd be happy to remove the concrete around the trees, so during construction that happens, you know, to give them a little band, to give them a little bit of leeway around them, to cut a foot back of that concrete, to, if there is trucks that are moving across it, and that concrete is bouncing, that there is no damage to the outer portion of the tree, especially underneath that bark, that cambium layer, which is the most important part of that tree. So that could be a condition as well, if you would find appropriate.
The condition is that the proposal would involve removing the unauthorized vehicle turnout, and the majority of the failing retaining wall and associated fill under the direction of an onsite arborist and engineer.
Yeah, that is, that is the scope of the work. What I'm asking you, what I'm asking you to consider is not make that a requirement as first thing right out of the chute.
May I jump in here? I thought my concern was just the safety of you and the workers in terms of the ability of the upper part of the drive to support the heavy vehicles. So could you address that?
I can address it, and let's see if I have some success. So I do understand and do see the conditions of the driveway. So, and I can see that there are concerns associated with that driveway. Pretty difficult for somebody to make a guarantee that there are no issues there. I myself, when I look at it, I don't necessarily see that as an issue, because there's very few, I mean, there's work that's going to happen up there, and there may be some trucks that are parked up there, but we're talking about something that may weigh, you know, like the size of a large pickup truck, maybe eight or 10,000 pounds. It's not like we're bringing a concrete truck all the way to the top of that, or a large moving truck, or something like that. So anyway, that would, I, I personally do not see any kind of safety or any issues there. And I would say that while all that concrete is there, I do not know how much reinforcement is in that concrete, and so if there is reinforcement in that concrete, then it's all being held together. And even though there's, there's a failing retaining wall, that retaining wall is still holding everything together. So it's probably in our best interest to keep it intact, if that is something that is agreeable upon you folks, and that you would allow this to happen whenever it seems to make sense, but to make sure that you hold him accountable in some way, but not force me to do that first thing if I am the person who's doing the work, whoever's doing the work. Allow it to be managed, man, I don't really see this as your guys' job on managing the, the project. Allow the person who is in charge of managing to give them the wings and the freedom to be able to do their job.
That's not our job, but it is for the town engineer or the project engineer to make that call, and not the owner, or the contractor, or the planning commission, I think, unless.
Can I just say that? We run into this issue all the time, where owners want to put money into their house, but they don't want to provide parking, or they don't want to fix situations that have been created illegally. They often do their project, and then they don't do the corrections. You, in the past, the commission has made it a condition that parking structures or failing driveways be repaired at the beginning of the project, so the money goes into that, and you don't end up with a house that's remodeled, and the owner says, "I have no money, I can't finish the project," and the illegal wall that never gets removed, and the driveway never gets shored up. So the town can't go back and say, "Okay, then remove your addition."
I appreciate very much that comment. Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. I would add one other, I would add one other idea, which is, if you're concerned about the, the failing of that turnout area, it could also be blocked off during construction to, to address that issue, so that, you know, no trucks do pull up there. But the narrowness of the driveway would dictate that, you know, it's only going to be things like pickup trucks that go up there. Another thought on the, the phasing, to make sure that, that turnout is removed, would be to cut off the turnout, maybe at the beginning of the job, but not necessarily cut back all of the concrete and, and do all of the, the additional work that we have shown. And that way, you know that at least the, that turnout is eliminated, which, that was, you know, a big issue at the beginning of the discussion, because it was done without permit years ago. So just throwing out another approach.
Sue, please. Sue Peterson, 139 Forest. In the report, it's on page eight of your report, that's 46 pages long, under the item of the resolution, number six, says, "The use permit conditioned upon removal of the unauthorized retaining wall and vehicular turnout and construction of a new support system will not be contrary," and then it goes on to explain why it's not contrary. Okay, I'm sorry, where were you? It's page eight of the 46-page report. It's, well, that's the one online. The resolution, it's item number six of the resolution. Thank you. And all of these, you know, it's been reviewed by engineers, it's been reviewed by arborists, and they all seem to think it was important to get that taken care of first.
I thought I had seen that somewhere, I was looking for it. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, and the resolution actually says that the use permit is conditioned upon that being repaired.
It further says, "During removal of existing retaining wall and vehicle turnout and installation of a new cantilever system, the project arborist and engineer shall be on-site to talk about mitigation measures, to talk about how to do that exactly." And I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that that's actually part of the resolution.
It is a part of the resol, thank you.
Also, just for the record, I wanted to address that letter that Eric read from Val. He says that he talked to me about the parking, and that he would put markers, he never did that. He and I had exactly one conversation about it, and he basically said to me that unless I could prove that his construction truck did that, it wasn't his problem. I could take it up with the construction companies.
We've taken care of that.
That's the, no, I know, but just for the record, I wanted that to be made.
We've, we've taken care of that.
So I, I, just to that, to that point in the resolution, we definitely have always planned and agreed that the arborist and engineer should be monitoring the work as it's, as it's going. We had a lot of conversations with the town arborist and engineer to the, to the effect that we don't know, none of us know what is underneath that driveway, and what the condition of the backs of the trees are, for example. So we do want to be very careful and monitor everything that we're doing, with the understanding that there may need to be adjustments in the, in the design, such as the exact location of the piles that are going in there, based on density of roots and so forth. So we definitely agree with that. But I don't think that that, I think that resolution is, is not saying that the sequence of construction shall be the retaining wall first, and then the rest. It says that a use permit won't be granted until that work is done, so.
The use permit is conditioned upon removal of the unauthorized retaining wall. That says to me not what you're saying, but.
But that doesn't necessarily say it has to be done first, it's just saying that the use permit.
Well, the use permit's actually for the remodel, not for.
Oh, okay. We. That's fine, thank you. Let's go on. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? Okay, not hearing any. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission to discuss. Not seeing anyone champion at that bit. I actually had a suggestion. It, it seemed to me that, given the difficulties with this driveway, with the condition of the driveway, and the concerns we have about construction vehicles getting up there, and lack of very specific clarity about what happens when, I was looking at, we actually have three projects before us today that have big driveways and large construction projects, and the others have several, several requirements to be undertaken that specifically indicate that geotech engineers will be on-site during the grading process, prior to the concrete form inspection, prior to the forms going in, prior to determining what it is the contractor will be doing. And I, I guess, I would like to see more, not so much simply monitoring the construction that goes on, but having the engineer at initial phases inspect and determine what construction and what phasing is required on that driveway.
I was wondering if we could maybe add some basic language, that maybe a professional has to establish stability throughout the process of the construction, because I'm looking at the, I guess this is the arborist? It's Urban Forestry Associates. Mr. Ray Morris is really concerned about stabilizing that driveway first. It's on the last page of his report, or it's actually page five. And he says, "Any repair, he says, "Any repair or replacement of the, of the, of the driving retaining wall should include consultation with a qualified forestry or arborist consultant working with the engineer from the start." So, and he is very concerned about the stability of that for the construction phase. And, and as I recall, that was the reason why we denied the permit, because we wanted to make sure that that roadway was addressed first at the beginning, and stabilize it for the duration of the construction. And, and I kind of see this, you know, what Linda said about, you know, doing the improvements and then running out of money, because this is, this is an expensive undertaking. So that is a very realistic scenario. And then what do you do? You can't really force people to make improvements. They just, their permit just expires. So I, I think, I mean, I like the project, and I supported it, but I did have concerns at the time about the retaining wall. So I would say that that should be a very clear condition, just to ensure that the client doesn't, or, I'm sorry, the owner doesn't run out of money, like you said, then what do you do? Or, and maybe it's not all done at once, but maybe it's verified to be stable during the construction phases. So I'm not sure how we word that, but I think it's not really up to us to micromanage the sequence, but just to, you know, make sure that a professional is signing off on the stability at every stage of the construction.
So I wasn't on the commission when you first heard this project, but I did go back and review the, the video. And I thought initially that the issue was that we weren't looking at this as an integrated project, and that was, that was a concern. And there wasn't really an approved solution to that turnout at that time. So what I'm seeing now is this is an integrated project, we have everybody coming together that's identified a solution that seems okay with the town, okay with the arborist, okay with the applicant. I think during construction, town engineer comes out at certain phases, and at certain times during construction, correct?
From the building official.
The building official, sorry.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that's part of a normal project, that they would come out at certain times to do that.
But the building official is different from the engineer.
Right, I just reread the town engineer's comments on this whole issue, and it, it seems like what he, his concern is, the illegal improvements get removed, once they're removed, we don't really know what's under the driveway, because it could just be tree roots holding up that driveway, it might be dirt, but when we were in the field, he noticed it looks like there's some kind of movement. So you could condition it upon the illegal improvements being removed, and then their engineer verifying that it's stable, or setting forth for the town engineer's review, minimum work necessary to stabilize it so it can support construction vehicles, and that, all that has to be done first, but not necessarily repaving the driveway or the, but you have to get it to a point, once you take the illegal stuff away, where it can support the trucks, or you've got the trucks parking down at the bottom, maybe in the neighbors' parking or in other places on Forest Avenue.
That's an excellent summary of what my concerns are.
So if you can fashion that into a condition somehow, they wouldn't necessarily have to do the whole repair of the driveway, but they have to get the illegal stuff out of there, and they have to support, if necessary.
And, and they have to complete an assessment of the conditions, because nobody knows what it might look like down there.
They have to present a written assessment to the town engineer, he has to concur on whatever's being proposed.
Yes.
If they open it up and it looks great, and their engineer says it looks great, and our engineer says it looks great, then everybody's happy, but, you know, if it's not, then they need to do some minimum work so that when they drive over that edge of, that now unsupported edge of the driveway, that it's not going to fail, right?
What you said, exactly.
Would the, you know, if the applicant did most of the work and left the driveway, the bulk of the driveway repair for the end, you know, there's some certification at the end of the work that they've met the conditions by the building official, right?
He has to issue a final inspection and issue an occupancy permit. When it's a large project and the house is like unlivable, that, that gives you controls over whether people move into the house, if, if the power's pulled and they're operating off a temporary power pole. I don't think this, the construction on the house is going to reach that point, and it's really hard to keep people from just moving right in. So they, they do it all the time, and then the town's really hesitant to pull power to a house that someone's living in, so there's no way to get them out. But I'm okay, I'm okay, the staff would be okay, if they remove the illegal work that's potentially damaging the trees, and they and the, their engineer and our engineer get the driveway so that it can support vehicles, then I don't, then, you know, if they end up not finishing it, it's just not going to look pretty, but it'll be stable for vehicles using it, and the illegal work has been removed from around the redwood trees.
I would go so far, though, as to add them to submit a bond or a letter of credit, indicating that they will complete the work on that driveway.
Yeah, I saw some, we have other language and other ones that has people submit contractor estimates for the amount of work necessary, and I was going to go there too, until Linda said, you know, as long as the professionals agreed on the stability, you know, it might not look pretty, but it would be supporting vehicles that are, are using that area. So I was sort of going away from that, I, bond idea.
Except that, if, once they remove that turnout, you have a sheer drop there.
They'll have a, you know, if it's, it's, they'll have a, a safety railing, they're required by the building code.
Part, part of their proposal is to continue the curb of the driveway.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what's, that's what's part of this cantilever system. So they'll, they'll remove the retaining wall in this turnout, and they'll kind of cantilever a, a curb off of the existing driveway that's held by these small pipe piles. So that visually will help to continue the curb of the driveway, that's part of their proposal.
I mean, you can't, you know, the driveway's behind the redwood tree, so people, it's not going to, you know, no matter what it looks like, I don't think it's really going to impact any neighbors.
Also, the walkway goes up that way, right?
The walkway goes, the stairway goes up, part of it, right.
On the right side, up towards the cantilevered section.
But it stops.
Is there, is there any place else to put that walkway?
Uh, I mean, I, I guess you could.
Why would you want to?
You could take up part of the driveway and remove part of the driveway and put it along the retaining wall, but I don't really see any reason for that.
I don't know at what point, the turnout goes out and the walkway falls off.
They don't need.
No, they don't need to.
The walkway stops, and you first get up, sorry, and you first get up to the driveway and then down.
Staff show.
The stairway ends before you get to that area.
You know, so, so maybe this will help. So the building code at, at some point started requiring stairways along driveway, along portions of driveways that exceeded a certain slope. So the stairway extends along that portion of the driveway that exceeds the slope, it stops where it's no longer required by the building code, but there's not really any reason to relocate that stairway, and it, you know, puts you off on a portion of the driveway that's no longer as steeply sloped, so it's for safety reasons, and I think it's fine, actually, the stairway.
So I guess I have some recommendations for modifying the resolution. I would like to see a requirement, I guess, on the bottom of page two of the reso in paragraph four, I guess going over to page three, probably before the last sentence that says, the, there shall be like a temporary demarcation of the neighbor's parking spot at 139 Forest. And the building officials shall be invited to take photographs, I'm just thinking how you write that.
The building officials shall document the condition of the 139 parking improvements prior to the start of construction.
Right. And, maybe this is another condition at the bottom of the, maybe a new paragraph 13, that, on page four, that would say that a professional would be needed to verify the stability of the drive area? Yes, please recommend.
Can I recommend that you start by stating that the illegal wall be removed first, and then the stability be ascertained by the project engineer, who will provide a written analysis or analysis of the condition to the town engineer for his approval?
Should, should we also have him determine how?
Yeah.
How much and how and how far to demolish that section?
The, they've already, the drawings that have been provided have already determined that.
Correct.
Yeah. Right, it's just, so what's happening is, because of the tree roots, they can't just cut, they can't just pull it back and build a new wall, because they'll be cutting the trees, the tree roots. So once the illegal work is out and the bank, the illegal bank filling is gone, they'll be able to determine how far in they need to put these piles that are going to support the driveway.
The engineer will determine.
But the width of the driveway after the removal of that parking area, that's already been agreed to. We're not asking them to remove anything that wasn't illegally constructed.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so Michelle thinks she's got it, so she's going to read what she thinks you're looking for.
This is what I came, I've come up with. After removal of the illegal improvements, the project engineer shall verify stability of the driveway, subject to review by the town engineer. I should add, you know, in written form or something to that nature. If additional stability is needed, these improvements shall be subject to further review by the town engineer.
Except when would the removal occur?
Prior to construction.
We could say prior to construction and the residential improvements.
Yes, prior to improvements to the house.
Okay.
So they could pull that out, check conditions, do a report on the safety, and.
Do the minimum necessary.
Do the minimum necessary and come up with plans on how to stabilize that structure, and at that point, they can determine, are you going to be able to drive trucks up and down, or do you have to do this first? And that's where you'd get a scope and discussion with the, the architect and the contractor. So the only thing I would add to what you said, Michelle, I thought was really good, was prior to construction on the house.
And with those modifications, I would move to approve application 1635 for 145 Forest Avenue.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There is obviously a ten deal, ten-day appeal period and a $400 or $500 fee for that with the city clerk's office, but doesn't look like you should have too many problems with that, sir.
Thank you.
for a conditional use permit to convert and enclose an existing 136-square-foot second-story deck to create a master bathroom and closet. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. As you stated, the, the project is located at 196 Tamalpais Road. The site is 6,780 square feet in area and slopes down to Tamalpais at a rate of about 39%. The existing residence is 1,529 square feet in area, it's two stories, has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and the project involves converting an exterior second-story deck to a master bathroom and a closet. And this addition would be actually reduced in height from the highest point of the residence. The existing residence is 34 feet in height, and the highest part of this addition would be 28 feet 6 inches, so about more than six feet below the highest point of the residence. As you can see from the table in the staff report, the site's located in the RS6 zone, and the addition is located outside of any required setbacks, and the floor area ratio and the lot coverage and the heights are all consistent with the requirements for the RS6 zone. In the staff report, you'll see there is a summary of neighboring residences, the size of those residences, and the number of bedrooms and bathrooms, and this project is consistent with what is provided in the neighboring residences. And with that, I recommend that you open the public hearing and take testimony, and then move to approve application number 17-12 by adopting resolution 17-14, setting forth the findings and conditions for project approval. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions of staff before we open?
I had a question. Page three, the bottom, code, site, should that be 17.032.060, PRN B?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that.
And then the first paragraph under the conditional use permit, where we're referencing 17032010, PRN A, and I wasn't clear on whether the PRN numerics were just kind of like numbering them, were in the code, they're actual A, B, C, and D?
You know, because I was kind of paraphrasing the code here, I wasn't verbatim quoting exactly verbiage in the code, that's why I used that, those numbers.
Okay.
I think that could definitely, I see your point.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this item, 196 Tamalpais Road? Please step forward, give us your name and address if you don't mind.
Yes, chairperson. My name's Craig Zellers, I'm at 192 Tamalpais Road. I am directly adjacent to 196 on the downhill side, and probably the closest neighbor. I, I did turn in a letter of recommendation for this project on Monday to the board, so I hope, maybe just confirming if you've received that or not.
Thank you, Craig, is that your letter?
Thank you very much, and nothing has changed since I wrote that letter. I, I do approve this project, being his neighbor, and anybody who's approving any property in Fairfax is a go for me. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's, hello, my name's Leila Hillme of Leila Hillme Design, and I've prepared the plans that you have for Chris and Robin. It's a small project. It's a small project, but I just want to say a couple of things. One is that Chris and Robin have discussed it, as you've heard, with their neighbors and don't have any objections as, as far as we know. The second thing is, we've also had an engineer out to look at the foundation of that part of the building, so that although we don't want to get full engineering until it's gone through the planning commission, we just thought we would just have that part reviewed before, and he, at the moment, didn't see any problems.
I'm sorry, which part are you referring to?
Well, just this, where the addition goes, it's on top of an existing deck, and then which is on top of living space, which is on the foundation. So, we wanted really early on just to, to get that verified. Without getting really into it, he couldn't, you know, he couldn't confirm it exactly, but based on his experience, he thought it would be fine. Then the third point is, the intention is to match the existing siding and attempt to just make it blend in as much as possible. And then just the other, the final point is really just, for 136 square feet, it will give huge convenience improvements to the house. There are two adults and two teenagers living there with one bathroom on the bedroom level, and to have this extra bathroom and closet space is, is just going to make a big difference to their daily lives. So, that's, that's it, really.
That's, that's what I thought in looking at the plans.
Exactly. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
If there's no other comments, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion. Seems fairly straightforward to me.
Yeah, I was just going to say, for such a small addition, it, it does add a lot of function and value to the project. I, I support this project.
Any other comments from the commissioners, or should we have Esther make that a motion? You could say so.
I moved, hold on. Where is it? I moved to approve, where did it go? Conditional use permit application number 17-12 for 196 Tamalpais Road, as stated in the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your project is approved. There is a ten-day appeal period. You probably don't have to worry about it. There's also a four or $500 fee for that appeal, and after 10 days, you can get rolling with your project. Good luck. 125 Live Oak Avenue, a request for a hill area residential development permit, parking variance and design review permit for a 50 percent remodel expansion of an existing single-family residence. Can we have that staff report?
Okay. So, the project encompasses the reconstruction and remodel of the entire structure. The 830-square-foot first floor would be remodeled into a den, a full bathroom, a master bedroom, with a full bathroom and a walk-in closet, while the 1,112-square-foot second floor would be expanded by 52 square feet and be remodeled to provide a kitchen, living room, two bedrooms, and one bathroom, resulting in a 1,962-square-foot, three-bedroom, three-bath residence. So, the house was gutted by a previous owner, but that's basically what it was before, was a three-bedroom, maybe a three-bedroom, one bath, they're going to three bedrooms and two baths. And the project requires the approval of a hill area residential development permit because the deconstruction went beyond what we consider a 50 percent remodel to put it back. There was also some excavation that occurred under the building that concerned the town engineer. We've worked through all that. The town engineer has approved the, the stabilization plan for the house. They're going to repair a concrete V ditch that runs across the back of the property that does carry water from the hillside, so it doesn't go down the hill. So, the town engineer is satisfied with the engineering proposals for the house. The project also requires design review because it's a 50 percent remodel, and the exterior of the house isn't going to change very much with the addition to the upper living room and kitchen. They're just going to match the existing siding. The south-facing rear of the structure will be articulated through the use of two different siding materials, with the existing siding alternating between horizontal 18-inch hardy board lap siding and stucco siding with a sand finish. It requires an encroachment permit, because when houses were built in Fairfax, when this one was built, they did not require property surveys, and so it's possible that when it was built, they weren't aware that a, a large portion of the driveway parking deck was actually in the public right-of-way. So, there was never a, a encroachment permit issued for the property. And whenever a 50 percent remodel is done to a house, we check and we make sure that everything is approved as it should be by today's standards. So, they're requesting an encroachment permit just to formalize the encroachment of the driveway parking deck that has existed there and been used that way for many, many years. It also requires a parking variance for the very same reason, because the parking, once they had the property surveyed to do, for the HRD, they, we discovered that the property line actually runs through the center of the parking deck, so two of the parking spaces are partially in the public right-of-way, while the garage space is entirely on the private property. So, they're just legalizing the existing parking situation. The Ross Valley Fire Department required that a fire truck pullout be provided for this project because it's a 50 percent remodel, and the applicants have proposed providing it in the driveway apron along the frontage of 130 Live Oak, which is a duplex further down Live Oak Avenue. It's depicted on page A 0.1 of the project plans. The fire department has approved that location. It meets their requirements for a fire truck staging pullout area.
Is that just right-of-way, or nobody owns that? It's not dedicated parking?
I'm getting to that. So, based on staff's investigation and the information available to us, they did have the property line across the street for this property surveyed. In the field, we believe that the fire truck pullout is entirely within the public right-of-way. We're recommending that you approve the project by adopting resolution 1715. But late this afternoon, I did receive a letter from the owner, which you have, the owner of 130 Live Oak, and letters from a number of his tenants, who have, you know, they have historically used this driveway, the area between the edge of the paved road and wherever the property line is, right? There's driveway because the only way to attach the parking for the duplex up to the edge of the road is to pave it. So, the owner is questioning how reliable the location of his, the location in the field of his front property line is. Okay? We did not, we did not require the owner to survey that property line. We went off of a survey point across the road. The right-of-way, the road right-of-way is 40 feet wide. That's how wide it was in the original subdivision that laid out that area. So, a surveyor surveyed the front property line across the street. We measured 40 feet. We felt pretty good that, that the property line is accurately depicted, but the property line was not surveyed. We don't usually require surveys of, in a situation like this unless someone's trying to build a structure that's going to get close to the front property line. In this situation, we were going forward believing that it's painting a fire truck pullout area red and posting it no parking, so that, so that if the fire truck goes up there, someone's having an emergency, they don't get up there and have to push cars out of their fire truck pullout. So, that, that's staff's position. I'm sure you will hear from the owner of the duplex later on, but we are recommending approval.
I'm sorry, could you clarify? Is the pullout on the side of 125 Live Oak or on the opposite side at 130?
It's across the street, in the driveway apron to 130, and the issue is, do we really know where the front property line is? So.
So, I had...
If you want to be absolutely sure, you could, you can handle this a number of ways. You could continue it and direct the project engineer to meet the town engineer out there to show him how he determined where the, where he's, where he's putting the front property line to 130 on his plans, and if the town engineer agrees that it's accurate, you could go with that. You could require a, a survey of that line, although there aren't any structures being proposed, so we don't typically require that. If, if they do an actual survey, they set the points, they have to record it at the county, it's a lot more expensive, it's a lot more elaborate process, which... Seems excessive for this situation. It seems to staff that, you know, if you're not satisfied with staff, who's not, we're not engineers, the building official and I are not engineers, okay? We went out into the best of our ability. We, we think we verified that where they're showing the parking for the fire truck is off of the 130 property, but if you want professionals to tell you that, you could continue it and ask the project engineer to meet the town engineer out there to show him how he arrived at where that line is located.
Linda, was that the only spot available for a turnout? Does it have to be right across? Is that the reason for the location, because it has to be right across?
It, it doesn't necessarily have to be right across, but it has to be in the vicinity. You know, it's, it's not going to meet the needs of providing a fire truck staging area if it's way down the street, so...
And there's nothing, there's nothing else on this side of the street?
There, there's always, there's always other ways, well, on the 125 side, you'd have to build, you'd have to build a deck that would support a fire truck, and you would be taking away the parking for the house at 125. So, you'd end up with a, with a, with a three-bedroom house with one parking space and a lot more expense to try to create a, a deck that can support the weight of a fire truck.
And so, what is the exact infringement on 130?
What is the exact infringement of that fire turnout on 130?
That is the question. Staff believes there is no infringement, and we checked with the town attorney, and she said the town is within its rights to take the public right-of-way for the safety of the neighborhood and require that apron that the 130 tenants and residents have been using historically, which is actually the public right-of-way, for a public safety improvement, right?
So, two quick questions. One, on the V ditch, there was a letter from Summit Engineers that talked about it just needed some maintenance, but we're actually saying that it needs repair, something more than just maintenance and clean out, correct?
Yes, but they actually have gone along with fixing it. The town engineer is still concerned that in the areas where the V ditch runs and it's really, really steep, he's not sure the fix they've proposed is really adequate, so we've included a condition that he just be out there, you know, when they're doing it, because he wants to make, you know, if something else is going to be necessary, he's going to require it at the building stage.
And then on the truck turnout, does the proposed location block parking to the duplex to getting into the parking spaces?
It would, and it's only used in emergen, you know what I mean? So, the fire truck's not going to be stored out there, right? So, they're going to, they can get in, in and out of their parking.
So, there's not going to be any, like, wall or anything?
No.
It's just...
It's just marking on the ground.
No parking there.
Marking on the ground, outlining the fire truck pullout, and perhaps a sign in the public right-of-way saying that this is a fire truck pullout.
So, they can go in and out. The objection by the tenants is that they're losing a parking space because currently they're, it's encroaching on their existing parking space.
You know, I got these so late in the day that I, I haven't even read them, so I would read, read what we've put in front of you. You should take a minute to read the owner of 130's letter anyway. He might want to do that. The owner of the duplex? Correct. The, the owner of 130 also provided some photographs of the front of his property, which you have in front of you as well.
So, Linda, for clarification, is this the space that would be turned into the fire turnout? Okay. In front of the planters?
Well, it's not...
Extends, you know, it extends, here, let's get the page out that shows it, so you can actually, it extends further than the planter. What page did I say about?
So, does it actually extend into the carport, though? No, it doesn't extend into the carport.
It, it runs along the, so it runs along the front of the building by the planter, and then it extends in front of maybe one and, one or one and a half of the parking spaces. And so, there would be no parking allowed in that part of the public right-of-way, but access to the parking on the private property would not be blocked except in emergencies.
Can I jump in here, Norma?
Yes.
Linda, on the resolution, is there language somewhere that requires the applicant to do anything about the turnaround?
Yeah, the applicant has to pay for the painting and the erection of the sign.
Is it set forth in the resolution somewhere?
Oh, I thought it was. Let me... So, I'm not finding it. If it's not there, it needs to go in there because it is the requirement of the fire department, anytime they require these pullouts, that they be built before any materials are stored on the site, any flammable materials. And I thought it was in here, but I'm not finding it. And I thought it was in here, but I'm not finding it, but. So you should add it. I mean, it's, it's a requirement of the fire department, so, um.
Okay, that was one question and then, um, in the engineer's letter, and my gosh, I hope I got the right one, because I kind of got a lot of ones mixed up. There was some note about the recorded record of survey of the boundary, did not resolve the street right-of-way. And he was gonna leave it to you to decide if the project should come back to him for a review of the fee titled deed. Could you explain that?
Yeah, so the fee titled deed is just, um, it's, it's them proving that they actually own the property and the town engineer's a real stickler about requiring that. Um, I don't know exactly why, because we get a title report that shows who owns the property, but he wants the fee titled deed. Usually he requires that before he sends it to you, but I mean, getting it before the building permits issued is just not, to me, not that big deal, but.
Did you include some language in the resolution to require that you get that at some point, or?
I, I don't feel that strongly about it, but if you, if you'd feel better about including it, you should include it.
Okay, I just misunderstood what you were saying just now then.
What did I say?
You were saying getting it before.
Well, so the, so I, um, I don't claim to understand why this is such an issue for the town engineer. I believe I know that, that who owns the property, he seems to need that piece of paper before he feels comfortable allowing someone to actually build a project. So, um, the building official and I don't agree with him, so we don't, I don't feel that strongly about it, but if you want to put his condition in effect, you can by making it a condition that we get it before the building permits issued. You know, in the past, the town's been, the town has been accused of not, not having the property owner sign application forms and things like that, and so I don't know if it's just a carryover from that, that that's the one way he's really sure that the person representing themselves as the property owner is actually the property owner. I check the tax record, where the tax bill's going, you know, and make sure it matches the application form. That's good enough for me, but.
Thanks, that's all I had.
Town engineer isn't watching this meeting.
Okay, why don't we open up the public hearing then and, uh, are there comments by the applicant? Is the applicant here? Could you give us your name, please?
My name is Kenneth Barley, I'm one of the partners in the project, Dan Bencourt, who's the legal owner, is not here, had a family emergency, the dog died, so. But anyway, on the grant deed, I can get you that in a couple of days, I have to go through the title company, but, you know, that's the first time we've ever been asked for it, but it's a simple, simple task. We've been working on this thing for two years, you know, it's been a lot of hurdles, you know, we and, we took over the project, we didn't create the problems, we're just trying to clean them up. It's an eyesore, I'm sure you're sick of this place as much as we are, okay? As far as the turnaround, I met with Mr. Lakkas on this issue, both of us agreed that it didn't encroach on his property. I think the real problem is parking, he's got an extra unit there that he shouldn't have, and I think that's the problem with the parking. You know, we're willing to look away, but you know, you know, it, you know, it's really up to you. We can do an additional survey, if you want to delay, want to have your engineer go out and look at it, that's fine too. We're pretty confident and staff is confident that it's, you know, in the city's domain. But it's the only spot you can do it, it's a real narrow road. If you've been up there, there's really no other option, other than just not doing anything to the house and denying the permit. I don't think any of us want that, but, uh, any questions you have with me? I'll be right here.
Have any, thank you, sir. Are there other community comments on this? Please step forward, give us your name, address.
Albert Maso, I'm the soils engineer and I'm also helping with the survey. Now, I wonder if you have cha, the chance to look at this, uh, survey, which shows how close the building was built to the actual property line? Did you, do you have a chance to look at this?
What's the sheet number?
He's enjoying all this, all this use. He's been enjoying all, the use of the public right-of-way for a long time. See, this is the edge of pavement, right here, and he's enjoying like 12 feet times this for his, for his private use. He built the, the building very close to the boundary line, which is four feet, and here is maybe about six feet or so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Was that your only comment?
Yeah, yeah, basically it.
Can, can I ask, that was, that was the survey?
Yes.
Taken by a surveyor, okay, so there is a survey.
Well, yeah, it's, it's also shown on your.
Yeah, this is, so this. But the owner is asking for verificate, another survey or verification?
He's asking that, that his front property line be surveyed in the field, his front property line, which is also the edge of the road across the street from their survey. That it be verified.
This guy wants a survey to verify.
But, but I mean, he should speak for himself. I, I didn't get to read his whole letter either, because it came so late in the day, so there could be other issues.
Well, but I, I believe that that survey is surveying the, you know, no? No.
We're on A01.
What we just saw is a survey of the.
I think there was a survey in the packet. There is a survey in the packet. Yeah, this is a survey.
So where are we looking at here?
But there's no relation with the rest of it.
There's no relationship. What tenant, what's the address on this 130?
This is 130.
This is 130.
It's 130 and 132, I think.
And this is 125.
This is 125.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand. The property owner of 130 is requesting that.
Here from the property owner.
Okay.
You have his letter in front of you, but I don't want to put, I don't want to speak for him.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Is someone speaking for 130?
Yes. We're ready. Good evening, Peter Lacks, I'm the owner of 130 and 132 Live Oak and apologize for not getting my comments and sooner, I don't live there anymore. Just happened to see that this matter was before the planning commission, because I was looking at something else regarding the planning commission. So, my concern, I've owned the property for about 18 years and during that entire time, we've been using the parking area in front of the concrete, uh, planter as our parking. We have five bedrooms, it's my understanding, we need five parking spaces, uh, off-street parking spaces, um, to be in compliance with current codes. And so we've essentially been using two off-street parking spaces in the area of the part of, in front of the planter box, which is the area that the applicant is proposing to be blocked off to parking. Whomever, uh, it's the, historically, we've been able to park two cars there without any problem, cars have been able to turn around there, fire trucks have been able to turn around there without any problem. So it does present a real hardship for me and my tenants. Um, I also have some emails from my tenants, they're also concerned. And, uh, the net effect would be, it would force parking in tandem, uh, for my tenants, uh, which is not really a viable option. Um, I went into some of the reasons in my letter. It would actually make it harder for people to turn around if tenants are forced to park tandem. Just the logistics of, of parking in that area. And, uh, so the, that's, you know, it is, it does work a, a real hardship for us. Historically, uh, in 2002, the town repaved Live Oak. And you can see in some of the photos, I think photos two, three, and four, you can see of what's now a very faint line. When I first bought the property, it was a very bright double-yellow line, it looked like it had been painted there, uh, by the city. In 2002, when they paved, uh, Live Oak, they ground up the street up to the edge of that line exactly and they stopped. I asked the, the paver, uh, you know, are you going to pave, uh, up to the carport? And they said, no, that's your property. Uh, I even asked them for a bid, I thought, well, what the heck, maybe they could pave it. It was $8,000, so I passed on that, but, uh, my point is that the town, uh, had dealt with that at that time as a, uh, you know, as it being my property. I am concerned, um, about the survey. My property was not surveyed. Now, it's different to take a survey of the applicant's property and then, you know, measure out and then project where the right-of-way should be, making assumptions that from their side of the street, that the right-of-way would extend, uh, based on their property lines up to the edge of my property line. Uh, the problem though is that the survey really, since we're talking about putting no parking directly in front of my property, the survey really should start from my property as well and incorporate that, uh, to make sure that the no parking is not infringing into essentially my property. The, um, be that as it may, the, uh, survey shows a potential error on its face because it shows the edge of one of my structures is four feet from the edge of the, uh, supposed, um, right-of-way. And so that creates, I think, a real question that I think really to be resolved, at a minimum, should require a survey, including, uh, a survey of where my property line is because, uh, it's, you know, potentially taking away use of my property for this no parking zone. And then, the other thing is that the, and, and in fact, the town engineer in his report, says that, um, it, he, he appraises it, he says it's fairly weak information on where the right-of-way or the property line is. That's in the, uh, town engineer's report attachment C dated April 6th, which is echoed in his prior, uh, report. So the town engineer has real concerns that the survey, uh, is weak and it doesn't really, determine the northern edge of the no parking area, which is the southern edge of my property. And, and so that's, I have a real concern about that, um, and I think that should, at a minimum, should be corrected and ascertained. And, uh, it's right there in the town engineer's assessment, uh, he calls into question the validity of the survey. And there are problems when you, you know, survey from a point across the street, you're, you're making assumptions and I, I think really the fair thing to do is to survey my, and determine my property lines as well. And then finally, um, on the conditions for the Ross Valley Fire Department, um, and that's on page seven of the staff report, uh, condition number seven says that alternative materials or methods may be proposed for any of the above, in referring to the fire, uh, the, the no parking zone. And I, I would like to see if other alternatives have been considered, I haven't seen them in the staff report. Uh, I, I'm very aware of the importance of fire safety, but I'm also very concerned about how this is impacting, uh, trip, you know, parking that's been used, uh, for as long as I've owned the property, eighteen, eighteen years, I'm concerned about it infringing possibly on my property. And I, I would like to see if there are other alternatives. And, uh, so those are, those are my concerns, those are my reasons, um, for my objections to the project. The rest of the project, you know, I, I don't have any problems with, it seems like it's a reasonable, uh, remodel and so forth, but, uh, it, it, it strikes me as I, I'm being kind of burdened in order to allow this project to meet, um, the, the fire, uh, fire department's, uh, requirements. I understand those aren't imposed by you, but I, I would like to see if there are some other alternatives to that. So, uh, thank you, if you don't have any questions, that's all, those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments. I had some of the same questions that you raised on, uh, on seeing that, uh, alternative methods may be proposed, and it, it seems to include all seven items, though there is a paragraph where they require the turnout. Okay, thank.
Okay, thank you.
How, how typical is this? I haven't really noticed about having turnouts. Is this a relatively new requirement?
Yeah, this is since the urban wildland interface regulations have been put into place, since California's had so many big fires, the state of California has upped the regulations and if you recall, you approved a remodel on Laurel where they actually had to excavate across the street and build a retaining wall to get the fire truck area in, so it's pretty, pretty common nowadays in the hillside areas.
Can we close the hearing?
Okay, well, step right up, sir.
My name is Tad Craig, 133 Live Oak. This no parking would create a parking hardship that, it actually would increase the parking hardship that already exists on Live Oak Avenue. Uh, the fire truck already goes up there, the small one, already turns around. If there is a fire emergency, uh, he's going to block the road anyway. If he puts hoses out to the fire hydrant, he's going to block the road anyway. If you've lived up in that neighborhood, which I, uh, understand is affectionately named Fairfax Heights, uh, you'll know there's only one way in and one way out, uh, and I've already been held up at the top of Willow, uh, where it meets with Maple, when there's a medical and/or fire emergency down at the bottom of Willow. If you understand fire response, you'll know that it's not just a fire truck that shows up, it's an ambulance and a police car, maybe more. So there's not just one vehicle showing up, it's not just one lone fire truck like, hey, here I am. It is three vehicles. So having the turnout not only exacerbates an already tense parking situation, it doesn't really solve the problem. There is, well, why you would take it from a, not even directly across the street, I don't know, but there is parking, or there is a small parking turnout, uh, between 125 and the house just down the street to, if you're facing 125, it would be to the left. And, but the city or the town put in no parking sign and partially blocked that parking off for us already, so. That, uh, yes ma'am?
I had a question for you. Where have you seen a fire truck turn around?
It turns around right there between 130 and 133, along with UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, and every other kind of truck you can think of, anybody that drives up there.
In the space behind your carport parking?
Between the edge of my carport and in what is his driveway, they turn around there. And past that fire hydrant that you see in those photos, there is really no street parking and the road dead ends just a couple hundred feet down the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking up, sir.
Norma, could I ask Peter a question?
Sure.
If that's okay, Peter. If we were to require the applicant to perform a survey to confirm the location of the right-of-way versus where your property ends, and it confirmed what, you know, they're thinking right now is where your property ends, what would, how would you react to that? I mean, you know, that's one option we have, is to ask them to do the survey and figure out that, that property line. That's not going to fix the trouble of, you know, if they confirm that the property line is where they think it is, it's not going to fix the parking situation for your property, obviously.
Well, it's one thing to, you know, inflict a no parking zone under the assumption that it's city right-of-way property. It's another thing to inflict that if it's on my property. So, as a minimum, that needs to be ascertained to prevent, to prevent that. And like I said, I would like to see if there are other alternatives, if I could preserve even one parking space, that would be very helpful. One of the possible alternatives, too, was possibly excavating the property across the street. I don't know if that's ever been discussed, that, but I'd also like to see if there's a way to do this where I could at least save one off-street parking spot. And just as a point of clarification about the turnarounds, the area where people have traditionally been turning around has been the area in front of the carport, which would be occupied by tandem parking. I mean, logically, you come there, that's the place to swing around and make the U-turn. So, you know, this would, you know, unintended consequence would actually make it a little harder to, for people to, to execute U-turns at that spot.
If I may just follow up, but that would actually involve having the turnaround on your property. I mean, for sure, because the area in front of the carport is your property. I mean, I don't think that's in question, right?
People, people turn around there anyways. I can't stop it. The only way I could stop people from turning around on that apron is if I put up a chain and, you know, as a practical matter, I don't mind people, you know, turning around there, and everyone does it. But if the cars, if, if cars are forced to park in tandem, as is being suggested, that would be where, that'd be blocking off the area where people do, do turn around.
I'm just, we should only talk when we've got the mic, otherwise the record is unclear. But, you know, I guess the quandary that I'm struggling with is that the fire department would require as a condition of this remodel, the turnaround. And then, you know, in terms of where the turnaround could be, there's limitations physically because of the hillside and everything. And, you know, maybe we can talk with staff about the, exploring the other options. But if the fire department's requiring the turnaround as a condition of the remodel, you know, if you don't throw the turnaround in there somehow in a way that's either property that the applicant has control of, or that the town has some control of, like with the right-of-way, you're basically forcing them to a less than 50% remodel if there's no turnaround, because that's the condition for the fire department. I guess I'm just expressing what I see as sort of a logjam here.
It's, it is, you know, it does present a challenge, for sure. I mean, and it's sort of externalizing the problem for this property onto my property. You know, and I would like to explore other alternatives, too, with the fire department, too. And I understand, you know, the fire department, you get one piece from the fire department, and that's kind of what they came up with. I didn't get notice from the fire department that, hey, this is, you know, what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. It comes, you know, I, this was noticed on the 17th. You know, I happened to stumble upon it a couple days ago. So, I mean, I understand that piece of it is the fire department, but, you know, it does say that alternatives could be considered. Maybe the thing to do is to have a discussion with the fire department, see if we can work something out. Be happy to also, you know, work with the applicant and the fire department. It does, it does create a quandary. It's a, you know, but that's, that's what I would like to at least have, have the opportunity to address. And one other point, too, just procedurally, the notice was on, postmarked on the 17th. I asked Linda this question, but today's the 26th. It's supposed to be 10 days' notice. In my practice of law, that 10 days would actually be tomorrow, not today. But I'm just raising that issue as a possibility in case the, the meeting was not noticed with the full 10 days. I suppose it depends on how you count the 10 days. I'm just raising that issue so as not to waive it now. But that's what I would like to see, an opportunity to see if we can work out some other kind of alternative. But I do want a survey because, you know, there is a real risk that I'm being deprived of use of my property, and that's something that should have been figured out and should have been done in the original survey. It wouldn't have, you know, been that much more expensive to incorporate that, so.
Would you, excuse me. Would you be willing to share in the cost of the, that additional cost of the survey that you're requesting?
No, and it's not my responsibility. The applicant should have, I think, addressed that, to embrace that, that issue. And, and I think it is important to make sure that my property isn't being infringed upon, and, you know, that would be on the applicant as part of this process, I think.
Can I ask a question, just so that I'm clear? You're asking for a survey of your property line because it might be off by a couple of feet? And I think, to Mimi's point, that's not going to make a difference to the, you know, the parking turnaround. However, are you also saying that the, a survey for 125, do we have a survey for 125? Because that property line is relative to your property, correct?
Well, there, it appears that what the, what has happened with the plans and what this whole discussion is based on is where is the town's right-of-way? And, you know, it's not a, it's, surveys need to be harmonized, and I think the starting point needs to also include my property, too. It's not just me saying that, it's the town engineer. He says it's a weak survey, because it doesn't, you know, it doesn't include my, my property.
You're saying it doesn't include the right-of-way and the boundary with your property on that side of the street?
That, that's correct, and, and that's important, because a survey has to, they have to certify that all the points that they're saying have been determined, have been determined and measured and surveyed. So, they just, they just stopped, you know, maybe it was penny-pinching, but I think given the impact on my property, given the town engineer's criticism of the survey, too, I think it would warrant, you know, doing a more robust survey to ensure that, you know, my property's not being infringed on. And then, again, an opportunity to perhaps explore alternatives with the fire department.
Linda, can I ask a question? What are the rules on removing trees in the public right-of-way?
You need a tree permit if they're over a certain size, so you have to go to the tree committee. It's, it's the responsi, so it's a responsibility of the adjacent property owner to go through that process if they need, if a tree needs to be removed. Are you?
The reason I'm asking, I'm noticing the contours on this map here. It seems that we have a very gradual slope. I'm not sure.
Are you looking right across the street from 125 Live Oak?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I noticed that it's a very gradual slope, and it looks like maybe it's natural right now. I don't, I can't tell from the photographs, but it almost seems like if you remove that 12-inch tree, if it's not a heritage tree or anything, and you get a permit, that maybe even just gravel in that area could provide room for another parking spot. I don't know if that's something that could be considered, and who would share the cost, I don't know. But, well, it seems that it actually would be the owner of 130. Yeah, no, it would be this one, because if this, if this turnaround is truly legal.
If it's the right-of-way?
If it's the right-of-way, if it's legal, then it, you know, I, this, yes. They can create a spot here, right behind the, the fire truck. And, you know, I think this is very unfortunate, because, you know, 125 has a right to improve his property. And, you know, I understand the parking issue, that is a big issue throughout Fairfax. And it seems that it's almost like by improving, you know, it's kind of like when you, when you press a balloon and, you know, the air moves to the other side. And in this case, the compliance now for the parking is, is a problem at 130. And it's not just, you know, the, the parking requirement, but, you know, the day-to-day practicality, and it makes a big difference, I think, especially, you know, in inclement weather. And so, you know, I don't know how that would be resolved, but it seems that there is an opportunity for an extra space. It doesn't even have to be paved. It could just be gravel.
The reason why the turnaround request is where it's at in front of Peter's place is that's what the fire department wanted, because that's where they turn around now when they're up there. Okay, that's where everybody turns around, because it's the only spot to turn around.
You know, and I, I agree that that's the most obvious, you know, spot for that turnaround. However, I do know that fire departments will work with you on alternative methods. And I think maybe that's not your responsibility. I think, I'm sorry, how, Peter, how do you pronounce your last name?
Lax.
Lax. Maybe if, if Mr. Lax is willing to work with the fire department on, and looking, at looking at other sites, they might consider it if you prepare, you know, a solid argument.
We spent probably a year and a half working with the fire department, getting all these little issues worked out, and this, this is what they wanted. We explored alternatives across the street. They wanted the turnaround there, and then the survey shows, and I'm convinced, that there's no encroachment on Mr. Lax's property.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
I met with him out there, and he, and I both agreed almost two years ago that there was no encroachment.
No, I understand. I mean, because even if, if the property line is off by two feet, I think the issue still remains. I'm just saying that for the satisfaction of Mr. Lax, Lax?
Peter.
Peter, Peter, thank you. If, if you wanted to pursue something on your own with the fire department, I don't see a problem with that. You know, I, sometimes another set of eyes, you know, if you propose something that's viable, I think they will consider it, and it doesn't have to stop this project from moving forward. I think the intention is to keep this project moving and try to preserve some of the parking, whether it be by cutting down a tree or by looking at something else, because, you know...
Well, right. Well, I, you know, I wasn't, was not included with any of the discussions with the fire department. I did have a discussion a couple of years ago, but the discussion was about, you know, trimming a little bit off of the, that, a little bit of the hillside to the east of, of where my, my property is, and, you know, possibly just a tiny bit of the, that area towards the middle of the road, a little bit over the, the double-yellow line. In fact, they went out there and they marked it with spray paint, and it was, you know, just a couple feet difference. So, that's what I thought was going to be before us today. This is a radically different scenario than what was, what I discussed with the applicant a couple of years ago. And I understand that's probably the fire department, you know, just saying, this is what the fire department wants. But I would like the opportunity to be able to, you know, work with the fire department and the applicant. And I don't think it's like something that's, you know, the burden is on me to, you know, pay for, or some, some other solution. But I think it would be good and would be useful to, to have that discussion, see if we can work out some kind of alternative. That, that's what I'm asking. You know, I understand the, you know, the need for updating fire codes and fire access and so forth. Like you said, it's like squeezing the balloon. It pushes a problem over here, but maybe there's some solution where, you know, things can be met without creating this, you know, this hardship for, for my property.
Peter, as, as you took a look at that, would you consider taking a look at this section where there's a tree adjacent to where you would park your car and see if there's any way of squeezing a compact parking space in there?
Are you talking about, I guess, to the east of?
That 12-foot?
Yeah, that...
That 12-foot tree that's right, the closest to your property?
Yeah, I, I, that, I mean, that's potentially an area that, that could be excavated.
Because you had said at least, if you could at least regain one space, that it might be a workable option.
Yeah, I mean, and maybe the thing to do, maybe they could shift that, you know, fire department turnout that they want, shift it a little to the east. That would be greatly appreciated. You know, there might be some other solutions, and I think it would be good to allow us to, you know, explore things like that. Obviously, you know, you can't necessarily make the decision determination now, but at least with the fire, if I could meet with the fire department.
Can I ask, exactly, when did you get the notice that this was happening?
I happened on it. I was looking at something I wanted to see about some other business that the planning commission might have. You know, of course, I'm on the town council, and, you know, things are kind of bouncing back and forth, and then I saw this. And that's what piqued my attention. It was, I think, Monday night. The notice that I received came in the mail. It was mailed to 130 Live Oak, postmarked April 17th. And I didn't see that because I, I don't live there now. I live off-site. And, you know, that's the nature of, of notice and so forth. I happened to see it online, and that was fortunate to, to have seen that. But that's how I received notice.
What was the date of the notice, Peter?
It was postmarked April 17th. I have it with me here.
Not the postmark, but the date of the notice itself.
It was mailed the 17th.
Yeah, the date on the...
I will address this.
Linda, when you address that, can you also tell me, if somebody's not an off-site owner anymore, how do they get notice, or what the requirements are?
Well, so, the state law requires that we mail the notices to the property owner's address where they receive their tax bills. That's what the law requires, that we use the Marin County Tax Assessor's site. You know, technically, if you are no longer declaring the homeowner's exemption because you're not living on the property, you'll get a, you'll have a new ta, a new address. The tax bill and the notices will go to wherever you're living. I don't know what's happening in this case. Then, the council many years ago also required that we send notices to tenants, so properties that are inhabited by tenants. So, it sounds like in this case, one notice went to the site address, but there was no notice that got to the property owner, because he doesn't live on-site anymore.
Right, it was addressed to me at 130 Live Oak.
Yeah, 130 Live Oak.
And, you know, I, I don't... And, and, you know, I, I don't have any criticism with, with that aspect of things. That's just, you asked how I received notice and--
Yeah.
Like I said, I, I happen to be looking on the webpage, so.
Thank you for your clarifications, Peter. I have a question for staff.
Can we close the public hearing or are we done with public comments?
Sir?
Quick comment. If we're looking for alternatives to find more parking spaces, I think the attention should be directed to the location of the fire hydrant. It was placed 12 feet inside the right-of-way. And they are normally at the edge or just outside, okay? And all this land here could be used for, for additional parking. Of course, it would imply to, to move the hydrant, but this area is completely useless the way it is now, okay?
Is, is that a flat area or a gradual slope?
No, it's sloping.
A slop, gradual slope?
Gentle sloping.
Yeah. Because that's what I, I mean, I noticed, it's kind of gentle on both sides. However, the relocation of a fire hydrant is, I think, can be a lot more expensive than maybe cutting down a tree. But to your point, I think there are, there are opportunities.
Also, some cities now is, especially when they have a good portion of the population in, in hill areas, they are using smaller trucks, okay? Now, in this case, it's, it's in Fairfax, but the requirement for 40 feet right-of-way might be modified if smaller trucks are used, okay? So that, that's another, another thing. My last comment is that the, the comment of the town engineer saying that the survey is weak is completely out of place. We, we did the, the regular survey to find the boundary of our property on the other side of the road. Once that boundary is secured, the, the line, the, the right-of-way line on the other side is exactly parallel, so there's no question about that. The, the survey can be repeated, but what's the, what's the accuracy? A quarter inch? If we can do that and, and find a, a different line, that, that's fine. But I don't think there would be any, any solution.
And with that, I think we're ready to close the public hearing. I hear, I see a nod over there. Thank you very much. So we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to us. I do have a question for staff. Is there, thank you. Is there any problem with continuing this item? Are we on a strict deadline? In order, the continuance would be in order to give them an opportunity to discuss other options with the fire department.
Our attorneys have advised us--
Or to discuss a survey.
Just to, so that we don't run afoul of any streamlining requirements, that if you're going to continue it, you ask the applicant to sign this agreement. It says that the agreement is a, is a, is a mutual agreement between the town and the applicant, that they're agreeing to a, a continuance that won't last more than 90 days. And then you give direction as to what you want them to accomplish in those 90 days. If they get it, if they get, come to some agreement before the 90 days and time for us to get them on a meeting, you know, it would happen sooner. But they have to agree to it so we don't end up getting into trouble with the Streamlining Act. If they don't agree to it, then you'll need to take action based on what you've got in front of you. So you might ask the applicant if they're willing to continue this, to try to see if there's some alternative way to meet the fire department's requirements.
That is our question then to the applicant. Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the 10-day requirement for notice? If something was mailed out on the 17th, are we at the 10-day mark? And if you're not--
So I, I have been here for 30 years and I have asked numerous different town attorneys. Does that 10 days mean 10 days prior to the meeting date or does that include the meeting date? And I've never really gotten a straight answer out of any of them. So people are used to us mailing our notice out 13 days before the meeting date, right? Because we try to do that. Because of Victory Village, we weren't able to. So we mailed it out 10 days, including the meeting date. We sent it out Monday. So we believe we met the, we believe we met the law. It sounds to me like there was some other issue going on here, that the notice didn't get to the property owner because he no longer lives on the property.
I'm sorry, the public hearing has been closed unless we have a question for you. I'm sorry, sir, but the public hearing is closed. Thank you for your comment, sir. My question for you is-- That was very clear for me, sir. Thank you. My question for staff is whether, whether there's a way to conditionally approve the project and that there would be time to have some discussion with the fire department to see if there's any alternative solutions? Or is this work that has to be done before anything else occurs?
You know, you're safe continuing this for, for one month because you won't, you won't be violating the Streamlining Act to continue. And you don't need their acquiescence to do that. If you feel you need more information, you can do that. Once we get to that next meeting, then you're going to have to make a decision because I, so that's, there we are.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
Linda, question, one of the public comments had to do with an area on Live Oak that used to be parking, but then got painted red. So it isn't used for parking, if I understand that correctly? Are you all familiar?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly where they're talking about, but I have a feeling that it, it was an area that didn't leave the 12-foot of clearance for the fire trucks. And so people continued to park there and the town had to put a stop to it because they, we require a minimum clearance, clearance with vehicles parked of 12 feet. But I, I don't know that that's exactly what's going on here. Normally, the city does not take parking away in any, in any, under any circumstances unless it's creating a dangerous situation with people using it for vehicle, for emergency vehicles to get through, right? That's why the fire department went out and actually marked the spaces. That was the, how we tried to deal with it first is mark where they were allowed to park in some of these neighborhoods. If they continue to park in places where they're not supposed to park, the only alternative is to mark it no parking.
Do, do they ever put a turnout? This is probably a stupid question, but what the heck? Peter says that everybody turns around in his driveway in the space beyond the cars. Would they ever officially make that a turnout?
I don't think they could because it sounds like they're extending onto his private property when they're turning around. The, I mean, I guess, I'm not an attorney, but if you wanted to try to file some kind of condemnation proceedings to, to grab part of his property. But otherwise, he's graciously been allowing people to turn around and crossing over onto his property, right?
Because that's not the right-of-way.
Right. Part of it is not the, part of it is the right-of-way, part of it is not the right-of-way. But, you know, the more I think about it, it might not be a bad idea to continue it. We could have the fire department at the next meeting. Because, you know, it is a fire department requirement. And I'm not up on all their regulations and--
And they do state that there are, that could be other options.
Linda, if we were to make a decision tonight and if, so I'm having trouble just figuring out some of the logistics of what we might be able to do. If we decided that we wanted to require the applicant to perform a survey to ensure that the right-of-way, that the area for the truck turnaround was not infringing upon Mr. Lax's property, how would that play out in terms of like a condition of the permit?
You would just, you would make it a condition of approval. The problem with that is if the survey shows that it is, then they don't have a project. You know? If you, if you prove it's subject to them proving that their fire truck turnout is entirely within the right-of-way and the survey shows something different, they no longer have a project and they have to reapply and pay all the fees again.
And I almost think it's better for the applicant than if we decided to continue it for 30 days because during that time, you could be proactive to confirm what you understand the property boundary to be. And if you determined that it was not where you thought it was, you could adjust the application accordingly such that you wouldn't have to necessarily pay to refile an application, which, you know, on the gamble that the survey is accurate and that you aren't infringing on Mr. Lax's property, you know, if that gamble was wrong, you'd kind of be out of the game, as, as Linda said, because the, the project would, would not have been approved because it would have been conditioned on the property line being where you think it is. Hold on just a second. So I don't know if we want to oppose that. I mean, we already asked the applicant about his willingness to sign the agreement to postpone for up to 90 days. So I guess this is just, you know, my, my ramblings. It isn't like we'd be asking, but maybe it's worthwhile hearing from the applicant even though we closed the public hearing.
But it sounds like we can continue for 30 days and not compromise the streamline.
I think you could ask a specific question of the applicant.
So, yeah, maybe if you could tell us what you think about that proposal.
Is this still on? We'll go with 30 days. We're confident we'll get a survey of the other property if we can get that obtained in the amount of time. And if not, we'll notify staff, you know, that we may need it to the next meeting, you know, if that's agreeable. And we'll try and work out with Peter on that alternative parking. But if we don't get approval, this thing will never get built, okay? And, and then we get into a whole road that I don't think anybody wants to go down, okay?
And 30 days is, seems like a reasonable amount of time. I appreciate your willingness to take that time to explore it with your neighbor.
We are to a point, but we believe we've satisfied every condition that has been met with us. This has been two years.
I understand. And, and that being the case, you could be back here next month for your approval because your project itself is not in question whatsoever.
I know.
From what I, from what I hear.
We know that it's the parking and the turnaround. It's the whole game and has been from the start. Thank you.
But, but you guys would have to really work together quickly to be able to get them back here. It's not 30 days from now, it's like two weeks from now when staff would need the information to get a staff report done. No, you, we could do that--
If we're not, if it's not all sorted out by the next meeting, then they'll ask you if you want a decision that, at that meeting or whether you're willing to allow more time.
It may not be necessary.
Can I just, I wanted to say one more thing.
Yes.
I, I think, Peter, you should talk to the fire department and try to come up with another solution because I, I know that they are open to listening. So if you come up with something that maybe is not as obvious, I think they might consider it. And then it's just a matter of drafting up a letter and showing a little diagram that could be very simple.
And I appreciate the opportunity to do that, just the way--
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think, you know, even if we are at the, if we have satisfied the 10-day requirement for the mailings, it, it's a very short period of time to, to react for anything in this day and age with all the logistics and the rules. It sometimes takes two weeks to even get an appointment to talk to an official. So, you know, I understand what the rules are. I, you know, I think this is a great project. I think it's an improvement, big improvement over what's going on there. I support the project, but it would be nice if the neighbors could work together to find a solution. And, you know, two brains, 10 brains are better than one. And I think--
And can you put that into a motion?
Yes. So I motion to continue. Where, cannot see this. Okay. The design review and encroachment permit application number 1713 for the Hill Area Residential Development Permit and Parking variance.
Is there a second?
Do we have to specify the purpose of that 30-day extension?
We should. The purpose is for the owner and the neighbors to discuss with the fire department alternative methods for meeting the turnaround requirement.
And is that also to verify the public right-of-way?
Yes, and to verify the property line for 130, 132, right?
Can we say it? Verify the edge of, the edge of the public right-of-way?
The edge of the public right-of-way, yes. That's a much simpler survey to confirm. Wonderful.
Maybe we can say in terms of delineating the property line in relation to the proposed fire truck turnaround. The property line--
And, and you'll need to be involved in finessing and negotiating that with the owner.
Yeah, so the property line along Live Oak Avenue in relation to the right-of-way and the truck turnaround.
Isn't the right-of-way at the property line or is it, can it be offset? Yeah, it is. So, so--
They, they can be in conflict with each other. That's why the survey needs to also incorporate an act of dignity.
No, see, what I'm trying to avoid here--
Miss her.
I am trying to avoid them having to set markers for someone's private property. And once you set markers, the surveyors have to record a survey, okay? You can require that if that's what you want.
There are ways--
That takes a long time. It's very expensive. They have paid to record the survey for their property. Their surveyor can go off of the point from their property, you know, run the line and determine where it is in the field. But if you require a, a property survey of the front property line for 130, then setting markers is going to require a recordation. It's not going to happen in 30 days.
So can we just make it then for the public right-of-way? Because that's where the fire truck has a right to park. Our town engineer is also a surveyor. So I believe for, for the town attorney, you know, she, she would be, well, I explained it to her, she would be satisfied if their surveyor goes out, shoots the line along the property frontage of 130 Live Oak, shows our town engineer what he's done, and the two engineers, one, the surveyor and our town engineer, who's also licensed as a surveyor, agree on the edge of the public right-of-way, which is also the front property line.
Let's go with that.
That would be adequate for our, our attorney.
Let's go with that.
Yeah.
That's the only thing we can do in a 30-day period. Anything beyond that, as you say, sir, could be six months. So let's just go with staff suggestion.
And Peter, I would look into maybe removing that tree to create another spot. It's just not on the record, but, you know, it seems like a simple fix to create another parking spot.
Good. So is there a second on the amended motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for your willingness to work with us here. Appreciate it.
Yes. Oh, God, yes.
Okay. 39 Wood Lane. Request for a Hill Area Residential Development Permit, Excavation Permit, Design Review, and Fence Height Variance. Staff report.
So this property was previously developed with a duplex that was wiped out by a very spectacular slide that actually, you know, damaged the building to the point where it couldn't be repaired. And it went all the way across Wood Lane to the other side of the street. So anyway, the new owner proposes the construction of a 2,573-square-foot, four-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence, 536-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-bath accessory dwelling unit, a 200-square-foot carport, and a 100-square-foot storage shed. The project would include stabilization and drainage improvements to restore and stabilize the slide scarpe. The project requires a Hill Area Residential Development Permit because the property is, is in a landslide hazard zone. Um, the excavation permit, the excavation required for the construction of the house is not very much. The most of the excavation is, is occurring to repair the slide and to create a berm at the bottom and just make it safe so that this property can be rebuilt on. It also requires design review. And I believe that's it for the discretionary permit. So the town engineer has reviewed the soils report and the plans for stabiliz- stabilization of the slide, which includes subdrains and above-grade swales to carry the water, you know, down off the hill and, and disperse it on the property. And he's, he believes the property can be built safely without creating hazards for any neighboring properties or the town road. The excavation is the minimum necessary to stabilize the site. The proposal complies with all the parking requirements. The design is a pleasing design. Um, yeah, that is the heater. Want me to turn it off?
No.
Want me to turn it off?
No, I'll take my.
Okay. So we're recommending approval of the project. Oh, there's one, there also requires a fence height variance because they want to kind of break up, it's a very large frontage. And it's just going to be this four-foot fence, and they want to put a little arbor over the front entryway, which, years ago, we tried to get that to be, those design features to be approved by like a zoning administrator at a staff level. And we had combined meetings with the town, um, town council and the planning commission. And at that time, nobody was willing to, um, take that power away from the planning commission and give it to the staff. And so that's never happened. But this design feature isn't going to block anyone's views. It's not going to create any vehicular blind areas. And so we're supporting the fence height variance. And we're recommending approval of the project. And that would conclude our report.
It's very attractive.
One of the commissioners asked a good question, the reason why we aren't talking about the second unit in the resolution, because based on the new state law, that second unit doesn't require your approval. It's, um, you know, they're doing the courtesy of including it in their plans, but it's not subject to design review by you. It's not subject to your approval. And so...
And the question, and what was confusing for me on that was when you look at the resolution, the resolution title includes that?
Yeah, it probably didn't have to include that in the title. Um, I included it because it's shown on the plans, but it really doesn't require your approval. And we didn't make any findings for it.
Right, because then the parent, the first whereas under that, you know,
Yeah.
doesn't include it. So...
If you think that's confusing, just strike that from the title.
When we get there, okay.
Yeah, because you don't really, don't really have any authority over it. They, they could have just not included it on the plans and then submitted for the second unit later and...
But that would have been odd.
Yeah.
On the other hand, should we have some sort of comment that, that the new regulations apply to this as opposed to five years down the road? Is this an illegal, an illegal second unit?
No, no. So, so they're going to have to, you know, you still have to submit a building permit for the second unit. And we're, you know, we will have the attached paperwork to say this is an administrative, you know, approval. By the time they get there, we may have a second unit ordinance. Um, but they meet the part, you know, they meet all the requirements for our current second unit ordinance, which is now longer no va- not valid, right, because of the state laws have superseded it. Yeah.
And I had a question on the drainage system. Um, we're requiring annual maintenance on that. So can you kind of explain what that is?
Yeah. So if you look at the, um, plan for the slide repair, you'll see that there is a, a huge network of what are called subdrains. Well, a lot of times, you know, people put them in and the property changes hands, or the owner gets, you know, old and infirm, and they don't maintain them. And that's integral to keeping that, that hillside stable, is that those continue to function and take the ground, groundwater down off the slide. If it stops functioning, there's the potential for further slippage.
So it's just kind of annually?
It's, it's...
Looking at them and making sure that they're not clogged or...
Right.
Okay.
And so we want to record that. We did this on the other big slide that we repaired. And we also did it on, um, the town engineer required it on the Arrowood subdivision, you know, all those houses that are up behind 711, because that's a huge fill area with all these subdrains. And we just want it recorded because there's a potential as time passes for people to forget, you know, that that system is there. And when we put it together, we'll probably have a plan showing the subdrain locations because once we all move on or retire or whatever, there'll be nobody around that remembers that, you know?
And there's also a berm area
Yes.
at the base that needs to be maintained
Right.
because those can wear out over time.
Right. So...
Shall we open the public hearing?
I just have a very, just quick question. It's actually, just out of curiosity, there is no design professional on these drawings, is there? A reason for the, for the architectural? I was just curious. I've never seen.
Um, you'd have to ask the applicant.
Okay.
Um, we don't require that. So, yeah. I'm just curious.
There's a lot of excellent work on this project and no one to claim credit.
Okay, not hearing other questions. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Are you the applicant? Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I don't think I have any comments, but, uh, yeah. If you have any questions.
Did you design the plans?
Uh, my wife did. She's...
Very, very lovely.
Okay, very nice. Yeah, I was wondering, um, why there was no name on there.
Yeah, no, it's my wife.
Excellent design.
How great.
Do we have questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this project? No? All right, then we'll close the public hearing.
Um, I love this piece of property. It is one of the most sweetest little spots back there. And you're right near Deer Park. And congratulations.
No other, we're all taken with the design.
I, I have no comment. I think this is beautiful. I think it's, I, I hope to see it someday soon.
So is there a motion?
I'll move, um, to approve the, uh, permit for the Hill Area Residential Development, Design Review, and Excavation Permit and Fence Height Variance, application number 17-14, and it's accompanying Resolution 17-14 with the reference to the accessory dwelling unit struck from the title of the resolution. I'll second.
But friendly amendment, I believe we should add the carport, storage shed, and repair to stabilize the existing slide, which is on the title of the reso that you did not read, Commissioner Newton. But some, somewhat critical elements.
I was just going to strike the words.
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling unit from the title.
I just didn't hear you read the other words. That's fine then. Was there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 10-day appeal period, but nobody who sees your design will appeal it. Good luck. Thank you.
Moving right along.
It isn't even midnight. Our, uh, our final project application is 101191 Park Piper Court, application 1715. Linda?
Okay. So this, I'm not going to read the whole list of improvements that they're going to make, but they've got, you know, it's an aging, um, affordable, multiple-unit project. And the front, you know, access stairs and decks need to be replaced. And there's some work that needs to be done. They need to provide an accessible handicap, accessible parking space. Um, so there's a whole list of improvements. They're going to make closures for the garbage, um, containers. Uh, the project requires design review. It also requires a parking variance and in fronts, a side yard setback variance and an encroachment permit because one of the access stairways is still going to, and, and the mailbox is going to extend into the public, a portion of the public right-of-way that we are not using. And the cul-de-sac is actually built and we're not using that area. Um, so they're not, they're not, they're not decreasing any setbacks, um, any minimum setbacks, but they are encroaching into the combined side yard setback. And that's actually, the situation is created by the fact that the parcel is very irregular. It kind of wraps around the cul-de-sac. The place where it's decreasing the setback is actually up behind school. So that's not getting it near any houses. It shouldn't impact anyone's residence. And we think it's going to be a big improvement. It's just really going to freshen up the look of, the appearance of the buildings. And the only location that they could really put another parking, they're losing one parking space. The only place they could really put it is where they're taking out the swimming pool. And I just think with this many units, they're losing that shared recreation area. I, I would hate to take it up for a parking space. And they're going to put in a nice patio that can be used by all the tenants. So we're very supportive of this project, and we're recommending that you approve it by adopting Resolution 1718.
Any questions of staff?
I do. So the handicap parking is required now because they're doing the remodel? It wasn't there before?
My understanding of ADA, of the ADA requirements is people are supposed to be in compliance with them now. It's not, it's not a, oh, you do a 50% remodel, then you comply with accessibility requirements. People are supposed to be in compliance now. I think they're taking this opportunity to do it because they are doing work to the property, right? Yeah.
And then my second question was on the staff report, page four. Um, the fifth paragraph starting with design review permit.
Oh, yes.
The windows will be...
The windows will be double-pane vinyl in black.
Thank you.
See, you reminded me. I wrote it in, but I forgot to. Thank you.
The windows will be, they will be there.
Linda, I just noticed, um, typos in the resolution. Um, on, uh, paragraph two on page three, we go A, B, C, D, H. And on page four, we go eight, nine, 10, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Okay, then, um, we'll go to the public hearing. Would the applicant like to make a comment? Please state your name.
Good evening. I'm Ethan Daniels. I'm a project manager with EH. I'm joined tonight by a fellow project manager and the project architect. Um, I would just say that EH has been around since 1968, developing and managing affordable properties in the Bay Area. And Marin, we're based out of San Rafael. Uh, so this project is right down the street from us.
Didn't realize this was an EH project.
Yes, yeah. It was, um, it was formerly with, uh, the Jon Stewart Companies. And we acquired it last year in June in partnership with the county and the Marin Community Foundation. Um, and the purpose of that acquisition was really to lock in the affordability of the property. There's sort of some natural affordability there. Yeah. So, um, the, the first step was to lock in that affordability with regulatory agreement, which we did. Uh, now we're, we're moving towards lining up the financing for the rehab. Uh, so in order to apply for that financing, we're here seeking, uh, the planning approval.
Very nice improvements overall. Smart use of that pool space. Any questions for the applicant?
I had a question. You're putting in a manager's office there. Do you have an onsite manager now?
Uh, we, we are aware of the California requirement to have a, a person of responsibility onsite if there's over 16 units. Uh, so we do have, uh, a maintenance person living onsite. Uh, and then we do have a property supervisor that manages the day-to-day activities as far as collecting rent or dealing with tenant issues. Uh, so the purpose of providing the leasing office, as it will be, uh, is to really provide tenants with that focal point to bring any issues, to have a person onsite to address, uh, their concerns that they don't currently have right now.
Okay. And your maintenance individual lives onsite?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Looks good. What would the commission like to do? I guess we'll close the public hearing formally.
You know, I, I don't have any issues or concerns with this project as proposed. I don't know if anybody else does.
I don't have any issues or concerns either. I, I support the project.
Can you make that a motion, Mimi?
Sure. Uh, I move to approve, um, the Design Review Parking and Side Yard Setback Variance and Encroachment Permit, application number 17-15, and Resolution Number 17-17 of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving Design Review and Encroachment Permits and Side Yard Setback and Parking Variances for Application 1715 to allow exterior changes to the Piper Court Apartments at 101 through 191 Piper Court as amended with the little typo corrections.
With the corrections, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Project is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period, just for the record. Thank you. Good night, you guys.
Good night.
Thank you for coming to town.
No, we can't.
Cannot take action on the second unit?
You guys heard the same thing I did, that she said 4-point-something percent of the commission has to be present to take action on an ordinance. So I don't think you can take action. you can take action.
To go home.
Well, could I?
You could.
Could I talk about it and just maybe let you guys know some of my thoughts?
Yeah, and definitely, if you guys have questions for the town attorney, like if there's things you see that don't look right or that you want a question, get the questions to me, because then I can get them answered before the next meeting.
Okay, so I guess from my perspective, some of my thoughts on this staff report were, in terms of the discussion of the residential second unit amnesty program, I wanted to see whether you guys are on the same page as I am with potentially giving the council a strong recommendation to reinstate that amnesty.
Yes, I think we should, absolutely.
Can you describe, I guess, the amnesty and kind of just tell me what it does for the public?
Well, maybe Linda can describe it a little bit better than I can.
I can tell you what the last amnesty did. The new one doesn't have to mirror that old amnesty, but the old amnesty significantly reduced the fees for applying to legalize an existing unit, right? It didn't get them out of going through the permitting process, but it lowered the fees. You know, the state law is kind of limiting what permits we can ask them to apply for. So I'm assuming the council will do something similar. They might even waive fees, you know, or, you know, because right now, to, right now, I'm trying to think, so right now, to apply for a second unit use permit is like $229 if you're a complying unit, right? So really, all the old one did was lower fees, right? You still had to meet the parking requirements, and you still had to, you know, provide a kitchen and things like that, but you got out of penalties, and your fees were lowered. So the state's already eliminating them having to come to any kind of a public hearing, and I'm assuming that all that's kind of left for the council to do is to lower fees or waive them.
Well, it seems like, I don't know, maybe I don't understand it well enough, but it seemed like there were restrictions on the accessory dwelling units being part of the existing residence or separate structures? Am I misinterpreting?
No, they can be, they can be both. It's just that my reading of it is, if you're doing it in an existing garage, you know, in the garages and the setbacks, you don't need variances. It seems, it seems pretty reasonable to me. And if you want to go above a garage in a setback, a garage that's already in a setback, you can do it. So I mean, I think it's a real, it's a big, it's a huge step in the right direction. It's going to make it so much, so much easier for people to put second units in. A lot of times, what makes it difficult is we don't allow parking in side yard setbacks, right? Well, now, the state says you can't prohibit that, right? Yeah, but you can, you can propose a unit inside your house, or you can build a detached accessory structure.
I was just thinking in terms of people that might have detached structures that are, or could be used as accessory dwelling units.
They can, they can convert them.
And I also, I guess it would, I would love to hear more about what the options for an amnesty are at the next meeting and how we might continue to encourage the council to encourage second units.
That's, that's great. We can ask the attorney to give some recommendations for what an amnesty would look like, yeah.
And I have a lot of questions on this that I'll probably, some of them are kind of a discussion piece. Some of them probably have to go to the attorney, like when it gets into, and I read the codes, which don't explain it any different, but, you know, like the parking requirement, not required for a unit if it's within half a mile of public transit. But that doesn't address what, you know, public transit means, is it means that you've got like one bus a week. I mean, those kinds of things, and those are the kinds of things we, you know, we kind of talked about with Victory Village, or what a care share vehicle is. So a lot of those things, you know, I'll just write those out now that we've got another month, and I'll, and I'll send them in, and that'll help, you know, when we do meet. I did have, you know, and there's some things here with, you know, where we have discretion that we'll discuss next time. One of the things that I noticed on here, and again, I wasn't on the commission when it talked about short-term rentals, and I know that's before the council, and they've been discussing that. So like one of the things on here is you do have discretion to limit that, and apparently what it sounds like the planning commission did before was not put any limits on that according to.
You know, when we adopted the second unit ordinance, Airbnb didn't exist.
Right, but it sounded like from this that what they were capturing in here was what, you know, the town had discretion was what was recently done by the planning commission in relation to short-term rentals. So that's probably something I'd kind of want to revisit next month when we talk about this. But I'll go ahead and put my questions together and then email them to you.
One other comment from me is the staff report and the resolution list out all the different zones, zoning sections that are being amended or that, you know, we're recommending be amended. And the resolution doesn't include 17088, which is the multifamily residential zone. But that is listed as one of the sections, maybe I'm getting this mixed up, in the ordinance, I get it. So it wasn't listed in the resolution, but it is listed in the ordinance.
And I think 052 was the other one, 17.052, which I think is the parking one.
Well, 17052 is on the resolution, at least in the title, and in the ordinance.
We'll check on that. So 17088 and 17052.
And those might have been differences, because I looked at the last staff report we had, the last time, and there were some differences with what was, I think, amended.
I have a question, just for clarification. In the staff report, it says that an accessory dwelling unit can be up to 1,200 square feet.
Yeah.
So, and it says shall not exceed 50% of the existing.
Square footage of the house, sorry.
Of the house. But if you have an addition or a remodel, a remodel or addition that's 50%, that requires the applicant to go through the planning commission.
But not if it's a second unit.
But not if it's a second unit.
Yeah.
Seems like an issue. I'm just, I mean, I.
Well, the thing that bothers me about this is that we, so we have unstable slopes, and so I'm, I mean, I kind of get the feeling from what I read that the attorneys wrote is that if the town can prove that you're going to put a second unit somewhere that's dangerous, we still have the authority to deny it, right? So at the building stage, I guess if someone's building in a landslide hazard zone, we're just going to ask for the same studies that we ask for for you now, right, for the second unit structure?
Because they still need to pull a permit and meet those requirements.
Right, and we're still, we're, we still have the responsibility to make sure that anything built isn't going to get someone killed or kill a neighbor, right?
And the same thing with fire safety, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking about the Live Oak Project, where, you know, conceivably that could have been an accessory dwelling unit, you know, at 50% that kind of impacted parking or something else in the neighborhood, and it seems like those are issues that should be reviewed or discussed.
No, trust me, this, these state changes are going to impact the neighborhoods, because it's, it's forcing communities that have really, you know, we have a very different topography than a lot of places, and I, they don't take into consideration how different Fairfax is topography and how unstable our slopes are and how little parking we have, right? So this is going to, it's going to allow a lot of people to get second units, and it's going to, and I don't care what Jim says, you know, you may, you may be perfectly fine riding your bike down Toyon Drive, you know, in the rain when you're in your 20s, but when you're in your 50s, you know, that's not, and you can have two people living in a one-bedroom unit, so it's, it's bound to change.
Is there anything that can be explored to address eccentric, well, you know, exceptions or special conditions?
I think, I think it's just going to have to be on a case-by-case basis, and staff's going to have to be really vigilant to like go out and look at the property, and if we see any kind of soil movement, we just have to condition the building permit that they get all these studies, because, you know, the only way we can really deny it is if we can show that there's some kind of hazard that's going to be created by the unit.
I would just like to say that after briefly looking at what the ordinance must do and the town's discretion, I like the proposed changes that they came up with, or that you guys came up with.
Oh, yeah, we have no issues with the way the town attorney's trying to change it. They're just complying with state law. I just, I think it's going to change, you know, if everyone can take every existing garage and every accessory building, and as long as they can pave a portion of their front yard, right, I can just see, I can just see, you know, Myrna and Portius with paved front yards and cars parked everywhere, and maybe that's what we need to do, just, yeah, we do. So anyway, change is good.
Change is going to come, whether it's good or not. Minutes. I had a comment on the first page on the.
Okay, on March 16?
March 30. March 30. Principal Planner under approval of agenda, Principal Planner Neil stated a neighborhood has requested that Application Number Three be heard. And then on page three, the very first bullet, the reference should be to court-ordered rent.
Just a small typo on page three, the first bullet. I think that should be RCDs, key funding source, instead of the Reds. Just a.
Where are you on page three?
The first bullet.
Are you looking at the ones we approved last month?
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one again. March 30, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I was on the wrong one.
Okay, so on page three of the March 30th, Fannie Mae should be F-A-N-N-I-E.
Very good.
And we've got, so we've got that in bullet three and bullet four. And then on page four, we've got the same thing under Ms. Williams made the following comments, the second bullet.
Okay, yep, I see that. I'll do a search and just make sure I hit all of that. She got it right in a couple places.
Love those computer programs. And then I think my last one was on page 10, on my comments down. The first bullet says she referred to the resolution, Section Two, Number Three, and stated this is a drive-through coffee shop, and she was not sure they should be encouraging bicyclists. I'm not sure that's what I said. What I meant on that was, that was my discussion of circulation goal five, and what we had in the resolution was the provision of nearby bicycle racks meets the intent of general plan circulation goal C5. By adding to the circulation network bicycle improvements, and by doing so, will encourage more bicyclists to patronize the business rather than vehicles. So what I had said was that's not included.
We don't want this surface, right?
Nothing in there says we're discouraging the vehicles and that we've got a drive-through coffee facility and a parking lot, so it makes that sound kind of odd. So what we decided to do was to go ahead and just end that statement after bicycle improvements. So that was the recommendation. And that's all I've got.
Anybody have a motion on those minutes?
Are we ready for a motion, or? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 30th meeting with the corrections as stated.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll move to adjourn our meeting.
I'll second that.
Aye.
I don't usually second them. Aye, aye, aye. We have adjourned.